Good evening, everyone. We're going to get started. But in order for this to be a legal board being where all the trustees are here, I'd like to call the meeting to order. And who's going to do roll call?
I'm here.
Okay. There's no flag. We'll do the pledge allegiance to the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, Chief, roll call.
Thank you, sir. Trustee Cook?
Here.
Trustee Oppenheim?
Here.
Trustee Takaoka?
Here.
Trustee Brown?
Here.
Trustee Schultz?
Here.
Trustee Markward?
Here.
Mayor Byrne?
Here. The meeting is, we have a quorum, and we'll turn it over to Steve Laban. Steve, where are you at?
Right here.
Okay.
Got it? Okay. Good evening. My name is Stephen Laban. I'm CEO of Centennial Real Estate Company. We are the owner of the mall. We purchased the mall approximately three and a half years ago. So first of all, we appreciate everyone coming out tonight. We really do want this to be a very informative meeting for everyone. We've tried to set up the room in a way in which after a few minutes here of my introduction, you can move through these different stations that will describe different parts of the project. And please ask questions, please write down comments. We really do genuinely want you to learn about the project, to be able to express your thoughts, feelings, and opinions, and come out of this. At the end, we'll have some time to do question and answer, but we've set it up in a manner where I think it'll be very great for you to be able to be exposed to the entire project. So just a little bit of background before you do that. As I mentioned, we bought the mall three and a half years ago. We bought the mall from, as I know, most of you know, Westfield Corporation that owned the mall. Our company is an owner of these types of projects, operator, developer. We're a long-term owner, so we made this investment, and it's our intention to own this mall for a very, very, very long time. We're not here to, we're not here to come in and do something to it and sell it and move on. We're here to own it, to operate it, to make it better and better and better and better over an extended period of time. This is what we do. I grew up in the retail business, so I don't come at this business from being a developer. I come at it from being an owner of retail. And so it's really very much the business that we're in of owning these kinds of projects. So after we bought the mall, just to further kind of indicate that, we, Westfield had added AMC, and David Buster's and Maggiano's, they had done that work. Then we came in and bought the mall. We knew that we were going to have to do some of what we're describing tonight, but honestly, we didn't expect it to change as fast as it changed. And so there's things that we have done and that were, the master plan we put together is something that has come together as a result of really a number of things that transpired. We knew Sears was eventually going to close, so when Sears closed, we purchased their store and the land that sits on their store. That was a further investment that we made after owning the mall. Carson's, quite frankly, we were surprised that Carson's closed, as many landlords were. But once they did close, we immediately worked to purchase their store. So the importance of that is that if we don't, if we don't own those pieces of real estate that are attached to the mall, we can't bring forth a plan that really transforms this project and transforms this mall, because then other people own parts of this property. And if other people own it, they can do whatever they choose to do. It may not be consistent with what a long-term owner that wants to build a great project for the community of Vernon Hills is going to do. So we had to acquire those parcels. After doing that, we set out to create a master plan. And at the end of the day, what we're trying to do is create a tremendous amenity for the community of Vernon Hills. I know I said it once before, and hopefully over time, all of you will start to feel that we genuinely mean this. If we're going to own it a long time, we have to make it successful. To make it successful, it has to be embraced by Vernon Hills. If you don't come here, it's not going to be successful. So if we don't do what is going to make you come here, make you want to come here, we're not, we're not doing our job. And so we spent a lot of time, we are spending a lot of time. We're making a significant investment in this market. I know as we go through the process, not everyone will be happy with every single thing. That, you know, as we all know, you know, that just happens in life. We're trying, I genuinely will tell you, we're trying. We're, we're listening, and we will continue to listen, because at the end of the day, again, we want this to be one of the most exciting, engaging places to go, not only for the community of Vernon Hills, but for other surrounding areas that may not have this kind of an amenity in other, in where they live. And it's critically important to us that it meets your needs. And there's a lot to that. We're spending a lot of dollars right now that you'll see as we go around here to do things in this mall that, that are extraordinary, that most people wouldn't do or wouldn't be able to do. We have a phenomenal partner in USAA that allows us to do the things that we're describing to you as we go around this, the room with this project. So again, I want to thank all of you for being here. I know, I know that you have a lot of thoughts and opinions, and again, we want to hear them. We want the community to show up, and we want the community to be involved in what ultimately this project becomes, and we are genuinely interested in that. So please go around, please look, ask questions, whatever you want, we're here. That's why we came. That's why we brought everybody here, to be able to answer the questions, so that you feel like you're getting what you need to get. And write down what you want us to hear, and we'll come back here and have questions and answers after you've had a chance to go through and look at everything. We'll go ahead and start, questions, I mean, everyone's wandering around, but whoever wants to walk up here, whoever has a question, we'll do our best to answer.
My name is Joel Skinner. My family and I are 20-year residents, original residents of Centennial Crossing. I've spoken a few minutes ago to trustee Schultz, trustee Cook, I'll say this to Mayor Byrne, trustee Brown, and all the others that are here present as voting members that are board trustees. I spoke with the CEO. My family and I are 110% in favor of this development going forward. We wish you every blessing in this going forward. Thank you for being here.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that.
Any other questions? You want me to step right up? Don't be shy.
Good evening. My name is Carl Orshers. I'm a Vernon Hills resident. I'm speaking on behalf of a broader group who got together to share some information with you all. So in the spirit of an open dialogue between Centennial and the community, an open survey was created and opened to the community through social media to gather some general feedback and interest in Hawthorne Mall 2.0. I was at a village board meeting in April, and I know you heard some of the community concerns at that point. It felt, we felt it was important to come back to you and circle back with some collective feedback as we move forward together. Just so you know, in the last couple weeks of this survey, we've had over 200 residents reply back to give us feedback on this. And kind of echoing the points of one of the other residents here, of those 200, 97% responded positively to the support, supporting your efforts to revitalize the mall. So I think that echoes the point again, we want this to happen, we have your back. You know, the people, that might have sounded a little different.
I love to know who the 3% are who don't.
Maybe they live underneath and you haven't found them. So, but while the community overwhelmingly supports efforts to revitalize the mall, there's some concerns in the long-term financial impact should Centennial request or the village offer incentives such as a TIF to revitalize the mall. So related to this topic in the survey, 72% support providing incentives to Centennial to improve the mall, but only 11% would support something like a TIF without any special considerations for public services such as fire, police, parks, schools, so on and so forth. With the proposed plan to build over 400 new apartments, I think it's just important to consider the impact on our current public services as infrastructure is considered. Couple more points for you and I'll be done. Additionally, the community respondents would like to see Centennial take a green or environmental approach to the enhancements to Hawthorne Mall. 70% of respondents replied favorably to the idea of taking an environmental approach versus 4% negatively. Although this isn't a driven requirement, this isn't, you know, we asked in relation to would you require environmental enhancements to support incentives? Only 41% said must have. So more about what we do for our public services versus environmental, but it's still very important to us.
And hopefully you had a chance to visit the C-Centennial.
Yes. So, yeah, so thank you.
So you're aware of the commitment we have?
Yeah.
Just, just so you know, and we certainly, I mean, we are, we are very, 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 we have an entire initiative within our company called C-Centennial that, that is very, very focused on sustainability and protecting the environment, how we operate our malls, the things that we do. So, so we really appreciate that, we're on board with you. It's very important to us, and you will see it throughout the project, throughout the way we operate the mall, in addition to what we're going to do, it's very, very important to us.
Thank you very much. So two last things, one thing for you gentlemen. I mean, to summarize, let's say, you have the support of the community to move forward. I just hope that you guys hear that from us, that you know that, just to continue to work on this journey together. And then one comment for our village board who knows here this evening, all we ask for is transparency when it comes to the decisions you make and the timelines in regards to the village involvement in the Centennial updates. 98% of our respondents in this survey expect this. Your election to your roles in our community includes an expectation that you engage your constituents and listen to our concerns. So as I kind of set the expectation from what we've heard so far from the community for Centennial as a partner, he was our representative, as we just want to make sure you understand where we stand and what we hope to work with you on moving forward. So thank you for your leadership through this project. We look forward to working with you more as it progresses. Thank you all.
Thanks.
Any other questions?
Anybody else?
Just to kind of follow up on one of the questions from Scott Ullish from Vernon Hills. Can this development be accomplished without getting TIF money?
No.
Then I would like to say that you need to rethink the development, because the village just gave a lot of money across the street, put an extensive burden on the school district and every other taxing body here. We keep giving TIF money to prime jewel properties. If you're a developer, you should learn how to develop without having to take our money, which the village sits there and says, "We don't levy a village tax." You're right, but every time you give away a TIF money, Mayor!
He needs to pay attention.
Would you pay attention?
What's your name?
Scott Ullish, sir.
Roger Byrne.
I'd like you to pay attention.
Well, this is a citizen that was talking to me about something too.
This meeting is about this, and you're asking people to make a comment?
Go ahead, make the comment. It'll be on TV also.
I'm fine with that.
Okay.
I'm making a comment that the village needs to sit there and rethink how they give out TIF money, because it's hurting every single taxing district around here. And you brag about not having a village tax, but every time you give out TIF money, every other taxing body needs to raise their taxes, because they're not benefiting from the increase in property values.
So, so let me speak on that. First of all, there's a number of different forms of TIFs, and what we'll be asking for is a TIF that will only pay us back on the increment that we create, the tax value that we create. Right now, property tax value is decreasing. That's going to keep going down if nothing's done at this mall. Retail sales tax is going down, because the sales are hemorrhaging here. Property taxes are going down. We have to invest money in a private public partnership, and we need to take part of the value created to help us make sense economically of that investment. Then everybody that's a beneficiary of those taxes wins.
And when you purchased this mall, you knew what was happening, you knew what you were going to have to do here. You, as a businessman, should have put that into your cash flow forecast and known that you needed to redevelop. It's not my job to make you rich.
Well, I don't think, I don't, I, let me, let me frame it up by way, because I don't think, we're not asking for you to do that.
You're asking me, you're asking me to come out of my pocket to fund all of the other entities around here, because you need money to help redevelop this.
No, let me, let me respond if I may.
Go ahead.
Is it okay? First of all, we're not Melody Farms. So whatever, whatever was, was done with Melody Farms is not us, okay? So I don't, I can't speak about what may have been given to Melody Farms. But let me explain a difference. Well, you know what, I'm not going to address that. We invested $200 million in this community. We walked in here and invested $200 million in the community, sight unseen, didn't ask for a penny, didn't do a thing. We made an investment long-term in your community for $200 million, and we came in. In a mall that we knew Sears was going to leave, was already starting to decline, we knew Carson's was weak, Penny's was weak, and we made an investment, because our business is not buying dying malls and owning dying malls. It's, it's developing great projects that are the amenity for a community. Because at the end of the day, that's, that's what I want, living in a community. I want a place I can go and have dinner and sit outside, and I can bring my kids, my grandkids, and a place I want to live my life and experience the things I want to do in life, music, art, food, culture, everything else. So we bought this mall, sure, it's our risk, absolutely. We took the risk, 100% right. Now we're coming back, and we bought the Sears box, no commitment, no nothing, Sears closed. If we don't buy that store, someone could come in and just open up a flea market in there. And you've got a flea market, and you've got people driving from anywhere you want, going to a flea market.
It's not exactly true, there's zoning rules to restrict them, but go ahead.
Well, but there's not zoning rules to protect anything that goes in there. And I can assure you, there's things that would go in there that are totally inconsistent with the quality of what this mall was and what we intended to be. So yes, we could, you know, it's a matter of what you want, and everything in life is a trade-off. But we're coming back and saying, we bought the Sears box, we made a further commitment. We bought the Carson's box, made a further commitment with nothing, no, this is all speculation on our part, nothing, and I know, and then we've come back and we've designed a project that we think, we believe, and I've heard from many people that, and this gentleman here, that believe, most of the people in the community believe this is a great thing for the community.
No one's arguing that.
Okay, well, but what you're saying is you're making me, you're saying you're making us rich.
And why we should, why we should finance your development.
We're not asking you to finance it. We're spending all of our money first. We're spending all of our money first. That's not financing. I don't know about you, but if I buy my house without a loan, I didn't get any financing. And so we spent $200 million, we're going to spend another $250 million without a penny from the city. All we're doing, all we're asking for, is that as we create revenue for the city.
And the community.
And the community. The schools, the city, the sales taxes, the property taxes that go to the schools, the schools get less and less tax dollars from us as this mall continues to decline. So I just struggle with the fact that all we're asking for, we're not getting rich no matter what happens. We're getting, we're building something for the community, as I said before. If we don't own this for 10 to 15 to 20 years, we can't invest the money we're investing. This is not like you can invest $250 million and magically this mall's worth a lot more money. I've talked to a lot of people that for us to attract the kinds of tenants that many people in this community want, we have to spend the money. I mean, everybody said, "Well, Apple." You think Apple's coming to this mall today? Not a chance. Lew Lemon, pick any tenant you want. We're trying to keep the tenants in the mall. We're doing everything we can to put our fingers in the diet to keep the tenants, and we've lost 30 tenants. So what we're asking for is let us spend all of our money, let us invest all of our money in your community, and then if, only if, we generate more revenue for the city and the schools, we want a portion of it, down the road.
And I'm sitting here saying, our schools and the rest of the community need that increased money.
But you won't get it if we don't spend our money.
You know what? You bought into this development, you knew what was going on. Anybody else who would buy into the development would know the same thing. You don't like the development, go ahead and sell it, and somebody else will go ahead and buy it and create something better.
Okay. You think so?
Yeah.
Okay.
I know so.
All right, good.
All right, let's move on.
Julie Simpson, 21 Monterey Drive, Vernon Hills. So I think that as a community, what we're looking for is something that's profitable for everybody. And we talk about the schools and what kind of money you're going to be bringing into the schools. It's my understanding that there's an appeal, or it's already been appealed, so the value of this mall has been decreased from what it has been for the last few years, which understandably has been declining. But so if it's put into a TIF area, I think that the last evaluation that I'm aware was around $3 million. If you appeal and get it cut in half, that's 1.5 million. And so the schools are only receiving money on that 1.5 million. And what we're looking for is something that's profitable for everybody. The schools need revenue, they're underfunded. The taxpayers are being burdened by referendum to accommodate the growth, which I'm not saying the growth is from you guys, but it's still coming. What we're looking for is something that's going to help our community and bring revenue to those other taxing bodies, and that doesn't sound like what you guys are looking to do. And I don't think anybody here, like, "We want you to be profitable," but we want everyone to be profitable. And I don't see the model where, where the schools, and the fire, and the library, and everybody's profitable. I don't see that in this model. I think that there's other sorts of incentives that maybe can be looked at.
I'm not sure how detailed you dug into the model, but we've dug pretty deeply. And as we look at, as I mentioned before, as we look at what the, what the taxes coming out of the mall right now are, and the trend, let's take your example, let's say we paid $3 million and it hadn't been cut in half, but let's say it goes down to 1.5, right? Our goal is to get that 1.5 up beyond 1.5, and if we're successful, we'll do that. If we're not successful, 1.5 turns into 1.3, and 1.2, and 1. That's the problem, right? We need to work together, there needs to be a partnership.
Right, but if it's a TIF, that's freezing it for 23 years. I mean, the schools can't wait 23.
It's not freezing anything. It's not freezing, I don't, I'm not sure, there's, there may be some misinformation out there, and I would, I would beg us all to maybe, you know, let's pause this conversation until we have facts and numbers we can sit and talk about. But I'm not sure why you're smirking, but it doesn't freeze anything. If we increase property taxes over the base, we pay those property taxes, but some portion has to come back to us to make it all make sense.
I mean, so I guess the difference is whether you're talking, you know, 100% of a TIF or a portion of a TIF. And I know that that stuff hasn't been discussed, but what we're just here as residents, that we're looking at profits for our school. And I understand if you say that you're not here and this mall dies, the school's getting less, but we're looking for the school to get more. And so that's what I'm saying.
And the way they'll get more is for us to invest our money in the mall. I mean, that's, forget about the TIF for a minute, just, let's put that aside for a second. The way the school is going to get more money is for this mall to be reinvested in. That's the only, it's the only way that we can, the taxes can be increased here, so somebody.
As long as the incentives aren't outrageous, yes.
Well, yes, right.
I got a big comment. By the way, is the inline stores that are here and that are not being changed, and Macy's and Penny's and such, that's not going to be TIFed. Does anybody understand what I just said?
Yeah, we're looking for.
It's not going to be TIFed.
We're not looking for.
No, it's not going to, the new, what could be TIFed is the Carson's and the Sears property. But the inline stores, they're going to just keep paying taxes. We're not going to refinance the whole thing.
Yeah, but that residential, that, that Carson's and Sears, or whatever the residential's going to be, that's what's going to bring in those dollars that is going to really help our schools. I mean, we need new development that.
But that doesn't happen on its own. That's, that's what we're here to say. It doesn't make sense on its own. Herein lies the problem. It's either we all share a higher amount of taxable value, or we don't. I mean, that's really the argument. So I would recommend.
Yeah, but us as a community have been sharing, like I said, through referendums and things of that nature to deal with these things, we've been sharing it and we've been burdening it. So what we're looking is something that's going to help lift that burden, and to me, your model doesn't make sense to do that for us.
Okay, I, I think we're prepared to show you otherwise, and you know, I'm not sure, again, I'm not sure how much of the model you really know.
I was just going to say, this is the first, first round, it's not really the first round, but it's a first round of, no, of about a 15-rounder. Let's face it, we're going to have so many meetings before anything here is approved, we're going to discuss this ad nauseam.
We hear, we hear your concerns. What we'd love to do is maybe take the last few minutes we have remaining and talk about other thoughts, comments, let, let's maybe shift the conversation away from TIF into ideas, et cetera.
Another topic to that note. Can you, with all the increase in the folks that will be living here, with the luxury apartments and then the renovations that will be happening, can you address the, when the, like, there'll be a traffic study and when we'll know a little bit more about the impact of how that'll be handled?
Sure. So the traffic study has already been, we've done a very light version of it to kind of look at, you know, what we had on site, you know, Sears box at 300,000 square feet of retail, a Carson's at 150,000 feet of retail, those are coming down, we're changing uses. A traffic study is underway. The preliminary numbers we got back, just kind of back of the envelope, was, you know, we're not going to increase traffic demand significantly. You know, the beauty of retail uses and apartments is there's some offset in when those people, you know, you leave for work at 7, 8 o'clock, that's not where the shoppers are out shopping. So there's, but there is going to be a, a traffic study.
Okay, yeah, I just, I understand it, but doing the, I know there'll be ebbs and flows of the traffic, but with more living here, right, more, 450 new buildings, right, with people living in it, there will be more cars, right, in this general vicinity, coming in and out at prime time, going to work and back.
There will be, certainly compared to an empty Sears box. But when Sears was blowing and going, you got to think about the Sears.
But I'm kind of talking about commuter, so at the morning, morning time, when the mall's never open anyway, at that early in the morning when commuters are coming and going.
Absolutely.
60 in Milwaukee are very, very, very congested, right? I'm sure your traffic study will show you that. Over 70,000 cars, we heard pass through here today already, right? So I would just.
We hear you.
Like to know that it's going to be addressed and.
It will certainly be addressed, and the city will require it, as they.
Fair enough, thank you.
Yep.
Hi, so I have a question. In light of full transparency, because as we've heard, that's all we're looking for, how many decisions have already actually been made with regards to financing? And is what we're saying here going to have an impact on the timeline, or is that already been established for the rollout of work being done on the mall?
So essentially, we just kind of want to make sure that our voice today is being heard. And I don't know how many decisions have already been in ink and done.
We have a lot of plans, we've spent a lot of.
Zero.
Okay. So what's the timeline?
We got conceptual, we got conceptual approval from the village for the concept, and that's where we are.
Okay, so what is the timeline that you're working towards?
I mean, as soon as possible, right? We just spent $12 million on empty boxes, so that money's getting no yield right now, and we need to figure something out quickly.
Well, it's more, more than that. I mean, the bottom line is the mall is declining every day. We're losing people, we're losing tenants every single day. So from our standpoint of, of wanting to start getting the mall turned around, going the other direction, or at least stop the bleeding, we're anxious to get started as soon as we can. But that's predicated on the process we go through with the city and all these things that you're talking about. So your voice is very well heard. Nothing, nothing, we can't go out tomorrow and do anything. The reason we're having this meeting is so your voice can be heard. So your voice can be heard. And the end of the day, it'll, you know, the process is gonna take what it's gonna take. We hope that we can get started as soon as we possibly can, because the, the, as I said, these malls go, if you don't invest capital, they go downhill. It's one or the other, they don't sit still. You either have to invest money and make them better, or you don't. And they, and, you know, Penny's may be gone in a year. You know, I, I, we don't know. I mean, we, we don't have that, we didn't think Carson's was gonna be gone. So, every day it's declining, and it's hard to convince people, it's hard to convince any tenants that you really want to come here in the current state the mall is in. So, we wanna get going as fast as we can, but nothing has been put in place to allow us to get going. Does that, does that answer your question?
I think so, thank you.
Okay.
To be clear, the developer, the mall, has not submitted a formal request for economic incentives to the village at this point in time. There have been no details given of that. At most, they've said, "There may be some of this flavor or some of that." We know there may be some vanilla, there may be some chocolate, there may be some other flavors. But nobody knows what that portion size is, or what they're gonna be requesting, or what dollars. None of that has been shared with us yet, so there's been no decisions.
And I'll just add as well, to share how seriously Centennial takes resident and, and community feedback. I had the opportunity to talk with several of you at the station on our new Central Park. And as I shared, that was actually inspired by a resident of Vernon Hills. When we started our community outreach eight months ago to get ideas from the consumers in the market and learn more about what Vernon Hills wants, and candidly, what we need to have to attract new shoppers to the center, shoppers that aren't coming here today. One of the ideas that we heard was from a mom here, and she shared that it would, it would be really great for her to have a place during the extreme weather temperatures, whether it be cold or hot, for her kids to come and play, and for us to celebrate the outdoors indoors. And the Central Park that we've designed, that will actually start construction this month and open in advance of our holiday season, is 100% responsive to that feedback from the community. So, you know, we continue to encourage you, we've got comment slips, email us, call us, we're here every day. And it's really important to us that what we ultimately deliver is something that this community is going to embrace. And we're just very excited to continue to get that feedback and incorporate it into our plans.
Okay, is that...
Any other questions?
So, let, let me just wrap, wrap up in this way. At that, thank you for that. I, I just wanna reiterate, and I, we, we have, we're here to, to listen. We're, we are working with the Village Board, they're working with us. We're trying to get through a process to ultimately deliver and create and deliver this project. And that's the purpose of this meeting. And we wanna be transparent, we want you to feel that way as it relates to us and, and to the Village Board as well. We are just, I apologize, you know, we're passionate about this, we just are. We don't wanna see this mall. I know I don't live around the corner, but truthfully, you know, this is a business of ours, it's not just a piece of real estate. And we wanna see this mall really turn into something terrific. And we're passionate about it. So we get a little, a little bit, you know, up because we're not here to take from the community. We're really here to invest in the community and to create something that the community really embraces. And we're not here to, we're here to improve the community, both financially and aesthetically. And, and we are doing this for that reason. Now, again, your comments are, are, you know, well, well-received, we understand them. We wanna answer them, we want, at least we want you to know everything that you want to know about what we're asking for, but we wanna make sure that it's, you really understand it. And, and as they've said, we, we're not that far down the road yet. We're trying to go and get, get done, so we can get the project going. But, but we wanna make sure the community is supportive and feels comfortable about everything that we're doing and whatever the deal is that, that is, is put together. So, I appreciate your comments, and thank you all very much for coming. We really do appreciate it.
Is there a motion to adjourn?
So may.
There's a second, there's a motion and a second. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Ah, the ayes have it, the meeting's adjourned. Thank you for coming out, and so, this'll be on TV, YouTube, you know, Twitter, I don't know, anything you can imagine. So, thank you, we're not leaving just yet, so, good night.